Okay, all right. Good evening and welcome to the April twentieth meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconference and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N twenty-nine twenty. The public may only view the meeting online and not, not in the council chambers. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Chairman Rossler.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here.
Commissioner Hastings.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
Commissioner Savage.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilara.
Here.
All right. Oh, hi, John. Commissioner Aguilara.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
I'm doing good, thank you. All present and, oh, I'm sorry. And I'm looking for student Commissioner Alexis Wolf. I don't see her yet. And back to you, Chairman.
All right, very good. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our March second meeting. If, if you've reviewed them and there are no changes, can we hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I was that Commissioner Aguilar?
Aguilara, yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Garrettson, did you second?
I second, yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to.
Commissioner Rossler, I just want to add, since Commissioner Savage was unable, he wasn't a commissioner at the time of last meeting, he should abstain from voting on this item.
Exactly, yeah, all right. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the March second meeting. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilara.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Savage.
Abstain.
And student commissioner, oh, actually, sorry about that. Motion passes six with Commissioner Savage abstaining.
Very good, thank you. The next item on our agenda is changes to the agenda. Ms. Chow, any changes this evening?
No changes this evening, Chairman Rossler. Just like to recognize if I could, we have Commissioner Savage that's joining us tonight as a new commissioner in the planning commission. And we'll go ahead and do the swearing in if you allow us to do that at this time.
Sure.
All right, well, Commissioner Savage, welcome. I just sent you through email the actual statement. If you could, please insert your name in that statement and go ahead and raise your right hand, please.
And, and just go ahead and make the statement now?
Go ahead, yes, please.
I, Johnny Savage, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you very much and congratulations again.
Welcome, welcome, Commissioner Savage.
All right.
That, that oath of office takes on a bit more meaning nowadays, I think, so.
Yeah.
The next item on our agenda is selection of the vice chair. And I believe Commissioner Grimm has agreed to serve, so if we could here, we'll open the nominations and if someone would like to, to make a nomination.
Commissioner Garrettson, I would nominate Commissioner, or Commissioner Grimm to be vice chairman.
There a second?
I second that.
That was Commissioner Hastings. All right, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please, for Commissioner Grimm to be our vice chair?
Sure. Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilara?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Abstain.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Motion passes six with Commissioner Grimm abstaining.
Very good, thank you, Charlie, I appreciate it. There shouldn't be too much to do here for a while, but we'll, we'll have to see when we get back together. So the next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is a time that the commission sets aside for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Ms. Chow, is there anyone that is in the gallery that wishes to speak in oral communications?
I am seeing, no, no, no additional, new attendees that is, are raising their hands for that, so no, none at this time, Chairman.
All right, then we'll move ahead to our public hearing for this evening. In our public hearing, staff will make a presentation. The applicant will provide either a presentation or additional information. We'll open it up to commissioners' questions of staff or the commission. And then I'll open the public hearing. We'll take testimony from the public, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to this discussion amongst the commissioners, and then we will call for the question and make a decision. So first item on our, our public hearing tonight is P twenty dash zero two four two Verizon Wireless Expansion. Mr. Rossler, I think the staff report is yours this evening?
Yes, that is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, and I have the, the presentation up. Michael, can you see that okay?
I do, thank you.
All right, no problem.
Perfect, thank you, Chairman, members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is a site development plan amendment for the proposed Verizon Vista Expansion and Renovation Project. The application number is P twenty dash zero two four two. The subject site is located on the east side of Business Park Drive between Sycamore Avenue and La Marada Drive. The subject site is six point two eight acres, one legal parcel, and addressed as twenty-four thirty Business Park Drive. The subject site is developed with an existing Verizon Wireless telephone switching facility. Here's an aerial photograph of the site that shows the existing buildings centrally located on the site with parking facilities towards the front of the, uh, front of the site and vacant land towards the rear. Surrounding land uses are all industrial. The general plan land use designation for the site is industrial general, which allows for manufacturing, distribution, as well as warehousing. The zoning for the property is specific plan fourteen. The list of permitted uses within specific plan fourteen include manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, as well as contractor storage facilities. On February fifth, two thousand and eight, the city's planning commission approved Site Development Plan Number PC fourteen dash two five eight, which approved the establishment and operation of a wireless telephone switching facility on the subject site. The proposed facility included a thirty-six thousand square foot, one-story warehouse, a nineteen thousand square foot, two-story ancillary office building, accessory equipment, parking lot, and other site improvements. The proposed Verizon Vista Expansion and Renovation Project requires a Site Development Plan Amendment. The proposed project includes a sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-one square foot addition to the existing warehouse facility, building on site, as well as HVAC and condensing units, two transformers, as well as two backup generators on one point zero nine acre. The submitted site plan indicates the proposed addition would be attached to the northeast corner of the existing warehouse building on site. The proposed outdoor equipment would be located to the north and east of the proposed building addition. Access to the site would be, would continue to be provided by two thirty-foot wide driveways along Business Park Drive. On-site circulation would continue to be provided by an existing twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle that circles the perimeter of the site. In regards to parking, the site currently maintains a total of ninety-nine parking spaces. According to the specific plan number twenty, excuse me, number fourteen, the existing building and proposed addition would require a total of ninety-six parking spaces. The submitted floor plan indicates the proposed addition has been configured to accommodate additional telecommunications equipment and supportive space. Staff notes that no additional personnel will be required to accommodate the additional equipment and operations. The proposed addition would be one-story, maximum height of twenty-two feet. The proposed addition has been designed to complement the existing warehouse building on site. The new addition would be, would maintain a C mu veneer to closely match the existing warehouse walls. The general plan land use designation again is general, industrial general, which allows for a broad range of industrial uses. In regards to specific plan number fourteen development standards, the maximum height in the specific plan is thirty-five feet. The proposed addition is twenty-two feet. In regards to parking, the specific plan would require a total of ninety-six parking spaces. A total of ninety-nine parking spaces currently occupy the site. In regards to architecture, the proposed addition has been designed to complement the existing warehouse building on site. A negative declaration has been prepared for this project and was circulated from March seventeenth to April sixth. No mitigation measures were identified in that document. One comment letter was received and it's included in your packet. With that, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt the attached resolutions approving negative declaration for the Verizon Vista Expansion Renovation Project and grant an amendment to the previously approved site development plan to construct a sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-one square foot building addition and associated telecommunications equipment to the existing Verizon Wireless telecommunications facility and mobile switching center at twenty-four thirty Business Park Drive. That concludes my presentation. Catherine McGaw, the project applicant and representatives of Verizon Wireless are, are available to answer any questions. And that concludes my report, thank you. So there's no presentation from the applicant? There will be no formal presentation from the applicant, but again, they are available to answer any questions you have tonight. All right, then we'll open it up to commissioners' questions. Commissioner Hastings, any, any questions of staff or the applicant?
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Grimm, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Pretty straightforward, no, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Garrettson?
Yes, just one question, and that is the fact that seems to be an awful lot of new equipment to have no additional staff and therefore no additional parking required. So I wonder if somebody from Verizon could comment on that?
Vic, you want to take that or do you want me to?
I can, Catherine, thank you.
Okay.
Again, I want to thank the City of Vista for giving us this opportunity. As far as the, the ongoing operations for the equipment, the site is already manned with a night shift of operations technicians as well as an operations technician during the day. There's no site coverage between the hours, scheduled at this time, between the hours of afternoon until ten PM at night. Once the equipment is installed and operational, it's pretty much self-reliant and it's monitored remotely out of our network operations center if, in the event there's any issues or conditions that need to be addressed on the equipment. So for the most part, the people that are already operational staff at the site continue to maintain the facility. And as I mentioned, the equipment being self-reliant, it continues to, it's network equipment, so it's a data in, data out type of an application. But the, so it doesn't, being that the equipment is highly reliable, it requires very little manual intervention by the onsite employees. So they are there mostly to monitor the equipment and facilitate if there's any type of conditions alarming so, so forth, but that's rare and as I mentioned, once the equipment is installed, it pretty, pretty much sustains itself without any manual intervention.
All right, thank you, yeah, it seems to be pretty straightforward, especially since it's up so much higher than everything behind it. The terrain goes down quite a bit from there, so anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Looney, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, for Michael, a part of the label of this project includes renovation. And could you explain what portion of the existing facility is going to be renovated as a daily equipment that they may be replacing? But I couldn't see where renovation is taking place.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that, this is Catherine. And actually, that's just kind of a oddity of the way we at Morrison Hirschfield named the project originally. When we started this project with Verizon, we looked at two different options for accommodating equipment. And one was to renovate inside the building, but this new equipment really needed its own new home. So this is purely an expansion. There is no renovation to any of the existing build. The most we're doing is, you know, cutting and opening between the two.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, appreciate it. That's all that I have.
Okay, Commissioner Aguilar, any questions of staff for the applicant?
Yeah, no, I'm very supportive of it, it's pretty straightforward. My only question, just kind of piggybacks on Commissioner Garrettson's question, how many people are employed there?
Based on the information that was provided, it indicates that nine to ten people in terms of administrative are onsite as well as two individuals designated for the equipment. But Catherine or Vic, you might even be able to elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yes, during the, as far as the operations folks that maintain the equipment, it is two people at, on the night shift and it's one person that is staff, normally staff during the day. The, there is an administrative part of the building and while we're in the COVID phase of the business right now, there's very few people, if, if at all, that occupy the administrative part of the building. But when it, when we do get past the COVID epidemic then, or pandemic, then we will have more people working, but they, they will not be maintenance-type individuals. They'll be people who are, you know, work there out of their office as a, as, as normal part of the normal working hours during the day. Okay, thank you.
And then Commissioner Savage, any questions of staff or the applicant?
No, I just wanted to thank staff for being so thorough, but everything seemed pretty straightforward, so.
Very good. I had one question. This is an expansion of your existing facility. Is it going to provide more service to the Vista community? And do you see further expansion? You have an additional area in the back that might be available for expansion. Is that going to happen sometime in the future?
I can speak to the future expansion and I think Vic can speak to the service to the Vista community. We did plan the building to potentially accommodate expanding that, you know, the expansion we're talking about right now in the future, maybe. It was one of those things, let's be smart about utilizing the space that we have available. If, because nobody's crystal ball is very clear on, you know, what the future's going to hold and what they might need. So the sighting is a result of, let's try and conserve as much open, well, let's try and conserve as much open space in case we decide we want to expand in the future, but also in terms of keeping pervious surfaces on the site too. So it's kind of a double consideration there. And Vic, you can speak to the serving the Vista community.
Sure, thanks, Catherine. As far as the, serving the, the local community there as well as Verizon's customer base, the, the Vista Center is what we call a SAP location. It is a main center that, that the data communications passes through that not only services the local community, but also services the national community. And this is the network architecture that Verizon has in place, so there's many of these types of Vista buildings, if you would, that are across the nation. And they also, the way the topology of the, of the buildings are set up, they also set up a reliability of the network in that one facility were to go offline. For some reason, the, another facility within the general Southern California area such as Vista could take on traffic. So it's both for the, the expanded growth of servicing customers as well as providing a more reliable network. So it's, it's a thing, they both go hand in hand. So, but yes, certainly as the, as the Verizon customer base grows in the local community as well as in Southern California, Vista will be positioned to be able to service that with a robust network. And then you probably heard as well about the 5G technology being on the forefront of wireless technology and that is what the Vista building is intended to support on a switching side. We don't necessarily have transmission capability out of the facility, but being that we are fiber-connected to our other network sites, we do, we are able to handle the volume of traffic that converges on this in order to, to be networked across the United States and Southern California. So it is definitely positioning the Vista site as being more robust and more reliable.
Super, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. Ms. Chow, do we have any, anyone wishing, wishing to testify?
I don't see anyone on the attendees list. Chairman Rossler, since I last checked, I still see Chris McGee and John Williams who are with the project and that's pretty much it.
Then I will close the, close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner's discussion. Commissioner Hastings, any comments?
It seems pretty straightforward to me and I'm happy that Verizon is doing well enough that they need to provide more support for their product. That's about it.
Commissioner Grimm, any, any comments?
Just that anytime a building expands, you know, you worry about the parking and I think that was brought up by the other commissioners, so I'm, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Garrettson?
No comment other than, you know, it's got a great view of the open land over there on, you know, the conservation land.
Mr. Looney?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Aguilar?
No, no questions or discussion. Good project.
All right, and Commissioner Savage, any comments?
Just that I'm glad to see businesses in Vista doing well. And yeah, thank you, I want to thank again the staff for being so thorough with their report.
Very good. All right, commissioners, are we ready for a motion? And would someone like to, would someone like to move Commissioner Grimm?
I would move staff recommendation as presented.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hastings seconds the motion. So we'll call for the question. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler, your vote, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilara?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Congratulations to the folks from Verizon and their, their consultants. And we'll move on to our next item on the agenda is reports or comments from the commission members. Any comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Conley's report. Name me, John.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things to update the commission on. First, the city council has had a couple of items come before them for discussion for potential zone change and general plan requests. There was one for a property off of Vista Grande back in January and another property off of Melrose Way, which is kind of near the courthouse. I believe that was in February. And then last week, they discussed the former Burlington Coat Factory property on Sycamore, at six fifty Sycamore. So there are a number that are interested in doing some general plan changes. The council provided commentary and input on all of the applications. It looks like at least a couple of them are going to move forward, so I'll keep you posted. I know that the project on Vista Grande and the project on Melrose Way have both been formally submitted and so they will be coming to the commission. It's still up in the air if the Burlington site's going to move forward, but the staff provided a number of comments back to the applicant and as a result of the council's input. So that's just an update on those sites. There will be a planning commission meeting on the fourth of May, which is our next meeting. Looks like we may only have one item, but we'll definitely have a meeting on that date. And then just an update on getting back in the chamber. I know the council has expressed interest in getting back in the chamber. We were hoping that would be May. It looks like it may happen in May, possibly June. But I don't have a date yet. As soon as I know when the council will go back, I'll report to the commission and of course, we'll follow with our meetings in the chamber as soon as they commence that. That's all I have unless anybody has any questions. Or Patsy, did you have anything that I didn't touch on?
No, I was just quickly mentioned that we're hoping to bring the housing element before the commission on May eighteenth. So that would be a recommendation from the planning commission to the city council at that point, so thank you.
Very good. John, I hate to bring it up, but can you bring us up to speed on what's happening with our friend on the corner, the old trail station on the corner of East Vista Way and Warmlands?
Yes, my favorite property.
Yeah.
We have been diligently working with the property owner there to obtain a building permit. He has submitted plans, they have cleared the building department.
Oh, wow.
We are waiting on the county health department to give them certification for his convenience store proposal and then he'll get a building permit. So we're hopeful that within the next thirty, sixty days, he'll show up at the counter and get his permit.
Very good. Finally.
Yeah.
Finally.
We're close, we're not there yet. Give him a permit, so I'm hopeful it happens.
And then getting him to build the thing after, after he pulls the permit, so.
Exactly.
All right, commissioners, any other comments or questions this evening?
I've got two.
Okay, Commissioner Looney?
Is there any update on the CVS store giving the C U right of way for the turnout?
Oh, yeah. We are pursuing all of our legal remedies for that, to obtain that right of way. So we've initiated the legal process to do that.
And then the second was, I heard that Twenty-four Hour Fitness, that's going to be converted to a bowling alley?
Twenty-four Hour Fitness on Sycamore, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they closed, but I was under the impression, Patsy, do you know, there was another gym that had approached us to go in there. I, I did not hear that it's going to be a bowling alley.
Yeah, I didn't hear that either.
I think it was, I'm sorry for interrupting there. I think it was, what was the gym that was at Hacienda and?
Twenty-four, oh.
I think it was LA Fitness.
LA Fitness?
I think LA Fitness was looking at the Twenty-four Hour Fitness on Sycamore, that's, that's the rumor.
Okay.
Nothing confirmed yet.
Why I thought I'd ask the people that know.
I'll let you know if I hear anything.
That's all, Mr. Rossler.
All right, anyone else? Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, Mr. Conley, what's the update on the car wash on Melrose between Cannon and Sunset? Seems like it's been ready to open forever.
Mr. Rossler, take that one since he's the planner.
Yeah, you know what, I'm actually working with the project manager out there to actually hopefully come up with a, a final inspection towards the end of the week. We've had our contract landscape
We've had our contract landscape architect out there twice in order to confirm the landscape treatment along the perimeter of the site and along the the slope. Unfortunately, they had quite a few corrections in the first two inspections, so we're hoping the third works. Other than that, I haven't done any final, you know, any formal inspections. I noticed the tower elements were lacking a few elements, so they went in and handled that. But I'm hoping towards the end of the week, we might have a call for a final inspection, and hopefully move that project forward. Okay, thank you.
Right, anyone else? If not, thank you very much. Again, welcome to Commissioner Savage, to the commission. And we will stand adjourned until May 4th, so goodnight, and.
Goodnight, everyone.
Just before everybody goes, can I ask who's been vaccinated? Okay, very good. Well, that may be important in getting back together, so anyhow. We will see you next month, thanks a lot.
Thank you.